They've already stored it in the work.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what they did there, but yeah. Well, I saw the, you know, I saw the new concrete.
For the minutes, maybe I missed them.
I thought the work I just was like.
It must be right after the mail.
Good evening. It's five thirty and I would like to call a planning commission Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting order. Can we get a roll call, Chris?
Absolutely. Ms. Proper, Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
And Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Are there any changes to the minutes, commissioners? Everybody happy with them?
It's good.
Such that they were?
Well-run meeting.
Well, well-run meeting by Mike, fourteen minutes. Okay, the minutes will stand approved. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just tonight.
Okay, as part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. If you are attending by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself. Anybody out there?
No hands raised.
Okay. So we'll move on to the agenda here. Here's the first issue on the agenda is the final hearing for BGV parcel three duplexes SVC at three fifty-five North Park Avenue, PL twenty twenty-four dash oh three two.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sarah Crump. For the record, I'm a planner with the town. A, we'll just jump right in here tonight, hopefully. A quick overview of the changes since the preliminary hearing, which was held for this project on September fifth. So tonight before you for final hearing, parcel three duplexes, part of the BGV Development Agreement, which was entered into with the town on this past April and approved by Town Council. This project includes eight duplexes on the, what's currently known as the South Gold Rush Overflow Parking Area. This will be eight duplex structures, so sixteen units. Three of the units will be access, three of those structures rather, will be accessed from Woods Drive. Five of the structures will be accessed from a new private drive and cul-de-sac off of Woods Drive. And then they will have an approximate allowed density of forty-eight thousand square feet. They're coming in just under that of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet. In the preliminary hearing, we discussed how this project is afforded a mass bonus under the master plan. Even though that policy was eliminated from the development code, it still applies here. And so the total mass and floor area of all structures will be fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet. Previously, at the preliminary hearing, we had the commission weigh in on a few different questions. And the commission agreed that this project previously warranted negative three points under our architectural compatibility compatibility policy for excessive architectural similarity. So I will discuss further in a moment how that has changed and been updated by the applicant. At the previous preliminary hearing, we also had the commission ask about whether the project was, should be awarded a positive point for the attractive detention ponds. The commission agreed, yes, one positive point is warranted for the two proposed detention ponds and based on past precedent. And then we also had the commission confirm whether or not the proposed landscaping plan complied with the development agreement request and concept plan for landscaping along the Park Avenue corridor. And the commission agreed, yes, it did, that the proposal did comply. So you can see the proposed landscaping and tree retention plan on this site plan here. But going on through the changes since the last hearing, I just want to jump to, let's see, page thirty-eight here and show you the updated material board that the applicant is proposing. At the previous hearing, the buildings which are arranged, again, three of them off of Woods Drive and five structures off of that new private drive. There are three different building types and arranged side by side. But previously, the color schemes were also arranged side by side, so you would have had two buildings that looked identical. One after the other and next to each other. The applicant has changed that proposal so that they're now have this material board with three different color schemes. And the three different building types will share a variety of those color schemes. So you may have building, let's see, building three are all along Woods Drive, that building type. Some of them will have scheme one, the next one will have scheme two and scheme three. This avoids the iteration of consecutive buildings having the same color scheme. Staff believes that the proposal that they have now meet the architectural compatibility standards in the code and avoids excessive similarity. So we'll be asking at the end whether you agree with that. I'll also scroll through each of the proposed. So again, we have building type one, which is here and here. But the first one will have a different color scheme than the second one. This is building type one with color scheme two. Building type two with color scheme one. One thing that does tie each building together is the same rock fascia and rock stone veneer is proposed throughout. So you can get a sense of the variation there among the building types. Another change since the preliminary hearing, well, it's not a change, but rather it was requested by commissioners to have more information on this. The applicant has provided information on the stone retaining walls that are found throughout the project. The retaining walls that are closest to Park Avenue will be this dry stacked stone. It's very similar to other taller retaining walls that you might be aware of around town. And then some of the lower retaining walls on the interior of the site next to the homes will be more structural walls with this stone veneer on the outside that will match the exterior of the homes. That is basically a summary of the changes from the applicant since the preliminary hearing. So now I'll just summarize the current point analysis, which was is recommended by staff at this time. Under policy six, the application is receiving negative one point for unbroken bridge lines greater than fifty feet in length. So that's one and under policy twenty-seven R, as agreed by the commission previously, positive one point for the two attractive detention ponds that will be shared by the entire project. And this is a passing score of zero points. And that is if you agree that the project now meets the, does not have excessive similarity. So staff recommends approval of this project tonight on the final hearing. We do have for you to read and review a friendly amendment to the findings and conditions, which I'm going to pass out for you now. I only made four copies, so please share with your neighbor. The changes are fairly minor. One is to condition number six regarding when the applicant can place a construction trailer on the project and we would like to include at the issuance of either a building permit or an infrastructure permit at the issuance of either one of those, they could have a construction trailer. This would help because so several things happening with the project there, including the roundabout, which will require a large infrastructure permit. So this would facilitate several aspects of the project. And again, the roundabout is not part of this project, but it does have to be completed before this project can be completed. And then the other revision is actually correction of an error on conditions number twenty and twenty-seven, removing the requirement for a photometric plan that is not applicable to duplex projects and it was inadvertently included. So just removing the photometric plan requirement there. Staff recommends that you approve the project with those friendly amendments to the findings and conditions. And I'm happy to take questions if you have any about the changes that have been made and the applicant is also here tonight. Thank you.
Mike, do you have any questions for Sarah?
I, Mr. Giller is asking if there would need to be a motion, you would need to say of, adopt a friendly amendment to the revised findings and conditions. Yeah.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Questions for Sarah?
No questions. Thanks.
Matt, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Alan, do you have any questions?
I just have, just a curiosity question. Great presentation. Thanks again, Sarah, for being succinct and just focusing on the changes. I'm just curious, on page thirty-nine, the packet shows for the adjacent parcel, the employee housing is in the middle of the parking lot. And then on page sixty-three in the master plan, it shows the employee housing on the west property line.
So that parcel two is an active application. I don't think I can discuss it, is that, but that is a change that will come before the commission.
Yeah, I think that'll be, that'll be a relevant question, I guess, when that comes here in a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thanks. It was just curiosity.
Thank you, Alan. As this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments? Please raise your hand. If you're online, press nine and star six to unmute yourself. Are we going to let them talk? Would the applicant like to present anything?
Hello, Graham Frank from BGV. For tonight, if you guys are satisfied with colors, then we feel like we've hit the mark on this one. But the biggest thing is, this is again, a Herculean lift by Sarah and Chris. While we have this one in, you have another parcel in, you have another parcel coming this week. And it's just, we're appreciative of all of these things moving forward, you guys looking at them. But the work that goes into these reports is significant, as you know, and these are complex and we appreciate it. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Alan, Elaine, Matt? Nope. Mike?
Thanks to Graham and Bill for your improvements on the retaining wall along Park Avenue.
As this is a public hearing, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment and are not here, please raise your hand. At the bottom of your screen or plus, press star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Anybody out there, Sarah?
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Let's just give one second. No, no hands raised for public comment.
Okay, then I'll close the public portion of this hearing. Commissioner comments on the proposal. Alan?
Let's see, so Sarah, you want us to answer your questions?
I think if, it could be like a head nod for the question and, you know, if, unless there's disagreement or something.
Yeah, I agree with the architectural compatibility, retaining walls, building height points. Otherwise, no other comments.
Elaine, any comments?
I agree with the architectural compatibility and the landscaping.
I do not.
Ethan?
No comments. And yes, I agree with the, that it no longer warrants a negative three points and and the landscaping. Thank you.
Mike?
It's a handsome development. It's very compliant with the code and the development agreement. Sarah's done a nice job. I thank the applicant. And regarding architectural compatibility, we're fine. Thank you.
I'd like to say you guys are starting off with a very nice project here with all of these things that are yet to come. Good job and we appreciate it. And I agree with the point analysis and the comments and conclusions of the staff.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the Breckenridge Grand Vacation South Gold Rush Lot, parcel three duplexes, PL twenty twenty-four zero three zero two, located at three five five North Park Avenue, along with the findings and conditions, including the two friendly amendments, number six and seven, distributed by Sarah at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ethan. We get a vote, Chris?
Yes. Ms. Gort. Ms. Proper is absent. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Gara.
Yes.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Poor gosh, thank you.
And Arthur.
That looks pretty.
It's a very attractive picture.
Next item is a preliminary here, hearing historic shed reconstruction at three oh three North Main Street, A to A, PL twenty twenty-four oh three fifty-four.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ellie Muncie, Planner One for the record. Before you tonight is the preliminary hearing for a historic shed reconstruction, which is the proposal to rebuild the historic shed located behind the Williams House that was removed without a permit in twenty twenty-two. This is regarding three oh three North Main Street, unit two A. So it's a lot located on the west side of North Main Street and is behind the primary structure of the Williams House pictured here and right next to the Willoughby Cottage. And then there's another residential structure located in the rear of the lot and it is surrounded by several commercial and other residential buildings in the area. For a history of the shed, it is believed to be built circa eighteen ninety as shown in Sanborn Fire Insurance Maps and was historically used as an ice house, which you can see here. So the shed was shown on the Sanborn Maps, very barely on the map in the eighteen ninety map. And then it was also mentioned throughout the property file for the property and has been known under several names, such as either a Borough Barn or the Trauna Cabin. Looking for kind of historic photos of the shed, the oldest photo I was able to find was a photo from either nineteen sixty-two to nineteen seventy-two, where you can see the historic shed circled in red from the zoomed in version of the photograph. So it's about right here in the photo on the left. The shed has moved around a bit on the lot. It was previously moved in nineteen ninety as part of relocating the Willoughby Cottage onto the site. And as part of that relocation, there was an addition to the shed that was removed. The addition can still be seen in this photo here, but is not shown in these bottom two photos. And before the relocation, the shed was used as a garage. Additionally, in some point during two thousand twelve, but prior to the demolition, a door was added to the north facade of the shed, which was a nonhistoric addition and is not proposed to be added back. The shed was unpainted vertical wood siding with a steeply pitched gable roof and had one set of wood plank doors on the west elevation and otherwise no other penetrations to the facade. It was additionally described to be in good condition and historically important in the cultural resource survey that was last done for the property. In, back in February, staff was out around town surveying all of the historic structures in town and realized that the shed that was supposed to be located on this lot was no longer there. It was a combination of looking at satellite imagery and checking cultural resource surveys to verify that there was indeed a structure there at one point that it seemed to be not there anymore. And upon further examining satellite imagery, staff was able to narrow it down to a three-week period of removal at some point between April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two and May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Once staff had verified that the shed had been removed without a permit, they reached out to the property owner to work on the, a resolution for the removal. Since this is the first instance of a incident like this happening in Breckenridge of a historic structure being removed without a permit, staff turned to other towns and cities within Colorado that also have historic structures and code protecting them to see if any of them had had something similar happen. We were able to find a comparable situation in the city of Boulder where there was a property owner who had requested to demolish a historic coal sled, coal shed slash chicken coop in their backyard and was denied. And then several years later demolished the structure anyway to install a basketball court. And then several years later demolished the structure anyway to install a basketball court. Yes. Mark, you should have received a promotion to panelist option. So the shed in Boulder was demolished in 2013 without a permit. And when the city of Boulder discovered the issue, they were, the city, this, sorry. The city of Boulder code requires any work on historic structures to be reviewed by the landmarks board and demolition of a historic structure without a permit is considered to be a criminal offense. So the homeowner tried to resolve the issue by bringing it before the landmarks board for review. With, the landmarks board had determined that rebuilding the structure was not appropriate and recommended that they, the city considered prosecuting the homeowner. But when the situation made it to Boulder City Council, they had called up the landmarks board decision and made the applicant tear out the basketball court and rebuild the historic shed to not set the precedent for allowing historic demolition after the fact. This was the closest example that staff was able to find to the situation that has happened in Breckenridge, which very much aligns with our Breckenridge Code Section 916E, which requires a historic structure demolished without a permit to be rebuilt. And as it is, when, by requiring the applicant to rebuild the structure, staff believes it is one of the most punitive options because there's nothing gained by the applicant from demolishing it. So for staff comments, specifically looking at 916E, that was the most applicable code section that staff was able to find for demolition or destruction of a historic structure within our code. The Chapter 11 Historic Preservation did not have as strong of an enforcement section as Chapter 1 did, which is why we went with this section. And it requires that the historic structure shall be reconstructed as closely as possible in its original condition at the time it was destroyed, unless the planning commission or town council approve of an alternative action. While the original materials for the shed were discarded, the applicant proposes to rebuild the shed with materials as closely, as close as possible to the shed prior to removal, which is shown in the plan submitted. So they, the applicant is proposing unpainted vertical wood siding to match the shed prior to removal. In looking at applicable prior design standards, staff found a couple that applied to the project and staff found that all of the design standards were met with priority design standard four. For, in regards to respecting historic settlement patterns, the shed will be replaced in the location that it was prior to demolition. In priority design standard 186, which is regarding roof forms, the applicant is proposing to match the roof form of the shed prior to demolition. And with the help of structurals that we were able to find in the property file, we are able to recon, the applicant is able to reconstruct the shed very accurately to what it was prior to demolition. Additionally, priority design standard 90, states use materials that appear to be the same as those used historically. Again, the applicant will be using the vertical wood planks to as closely mimic the shed prior to removal as possible. And then finally, priority design standard 96, states use a solid to void ratio that is similar to those found on historic and supporting buildings. The applicant is proposing to reinstall the one entry on the western facade of the shed, the front elevation, and is not proposing to install any other entries on the shed. For the point analysis, staff finds the application meets all absolute and relative project policies of the development code and also meets all of the relevant design standards. And then staff has three questions for the commission. The first relating back to the enforcement and penalties 916E, if the planning commission agrees with staff's recommendation to move forward with rebuilding the historic structure.
Questions for Ellie? Do you have any else?
I do. Thanks, Ellie. Presentation. So where the shed's going to be located now, what's in that, what's there now?
So currently where the shed is located is additional paving and one additional parking space that will be removed. Kind of. It's, the parking space is partially where the shed was and also partially in an existing area. So the shed used to be located, sorry, I'm zooming in a little bit more. You can see a hot tub right there and then the shed used to be located right in front of the hot tub. You can see there's this kind of cement square and there's another one right about here for where the foundation of the shed used to be. So it was kind of right in this area where this parking space now is. So it will be going back in that area.
In the same area, okay. And then, so will the loss of that pavement or parking spot, will the, that development or that lot still be in compliance for the right appropriate number of parking spots and snow storage?
Yes. So because that, the property is located within the service district, they are allowed a, both minimum and maximum of, I believe, 1.1 spaces per thousand square feet. So this property is allowed a maximum of, I want to say, three parking spaces. So they are already meeting that.
Okay. And then there was also, one of the diagrams that said there's another parking spot that has to be revegetated?
Yes. There was additional parking space that was added right about where the snow mound is. That is being removed as part of this project because the property is already at their maximum allowed parking.
Okay, got it.
Which you can see.
Yeah.
This parking space.
Okay. So there's two things they have to do to come back into compliance.
That is correct.
Okay, great. All right, that's it. Thank you.
I have, I have two questions. What's the timeline in this penalty or whatever for them? Do they have to have it done in a certain amount of time? I tried to figure out, like, they have five years to rebuild this thing or?
They have, they are working through the process actively to try to get this rebuilt as soon as possible. So I believe they will try to have the shortest timeline possible. They, I suppose the maximum amount of time they could take would be until the permit expires. But we do consider the property in violation until the shed is fully rebuilt. So we would continue to make sure that the shed is rebuilt in a timely manner.
Then, this is just a random question on the side. Do we have tags or anything on the historic sheds in town so that people know that they're historic before they tear them down or?
I don't believe that we do. We do have tags on some of the, there might be some sheds around town that are historic that have tags as part of the project, where we put the tags on the primary structures. But those were done at the owner's option. So we wouldn't be able to require tags on every historic shed in town. But it could be something that we look into offering.
Did they give any reason why they tore it down or are we allowed to ask that?
The applicant is in attendance. There's, I am not aware of any reason being given for why they tore it down. But that could be a question for the applicant.
Just about the material used to rebuild the shed. I know it says unpainted vertical wood planks. Is there any stipulation that it has to be pre-weathered or like a barnwood style plank rather than just unpainted rough sawn wood that you could get from a, you know, Hester's or something?
I don't believe it's explicitly stated in the application at this time, but that could be a stipulation that we can add.
But, I mean, we'd require them to have like a dark stain or something versus just having just raw wood that is rough sawn.
So it would be stained as opposed to untreated?
Yeah, they're, they're just got finished versus just being a untreated material.
That's all I have.
I have basically the same question. You, the, the report stat states the applicant, to comply with this polyvinyl quest, the applicant tried to source historic rough sawn vertical wood planks if possible. So I read that as historic, meaning reclaimed. So not wood from Hester's. And I know that they can find something reclaimed and I would, I would insist that they do personally. And, and instead of saying if possible, I think we should mandate that they replace the, the vertical siding with reclaimed rough sawn material, which is available. It might be tough to find, but they can find it. That's all I have.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. So will there be a foundation under this?
Yes, there was a foundation under the shed previously and there will be one installed as part of this project, I believe. Yeah.
You go to the very last drawing, it shows the original one had like a cement.
It does talk about a slab, which I believe is.
And it even talks about that it's, the siding on it is from some old barn that they used back then. Like it says on the very bottom, siding, natural barnwood from Borough Barn demolition.
Yes. So the siding that it is talking about here was in demoing the addition, the Borough Barn addition that was on the shed. I believe they were pulling the siding from that onto the historic shed, which that was during the 1990 relocation. So we do not have that material anymore. But the applicant can try to source reclaimed wood as part of this.
For clarification, so the picture of the barn or the shed that we have that has reclaimed wood on it or that's the original?
I believe the picture that we have of the shed prior to removal is the shed original material as well as material that was removed from the addition when it was taken off and put onto the shed and probably on the wall that the addition was taken off of.
Okay, so the foundation you referenced was from 1990. We have no indication that that foundation does or does not exist. If it does exist, it was paved over at a minimum. But, and Matt's input on the stain and, and your answers was important. But big picture, reconstruction is one of the four approved Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. It's an approved treatment. But it also requires that it be exacting. And the concept that's drawn here is a start. But we, we would like to know much more about this before we understand whether or not this reconstruction would meet the town code and the secretary's standards, which the town code is based on. I realize that wasn't entirely a question, but can you speak to that? What should we expect here for drawings for final?
I mean, I believe the applicant would most likely be willing to amend the drawings to add further detail. They do wish to chime in when given the chance, when that we get around to that. But yes, I've, we could have additional detail added to the drawings to further specify the material and building quality for when the shed is rebuilt.
Okay. The drawings would provide the town assurance. Thank you, Ellie. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Any further comments, Alan? Elaine?
I would just add to my further, my, my previous comment and I think I'd like to see a sample of the siding before we approve it. Yeah, color board. Color board and, and an actual sample of the siding would be a good, a good thing to see.
Any further comments, Mike? And what I'm hearing from the commission is that this needs to be treated a bit more formally than it has been. And probably answers question number three, whether or not it's ready for a final. I think we're expecting the applicant to come back with some additional drawings, some additional samples, so we can discuss exactly what the reconstruction is going to be.
If the applicant can speak.
Is the applicant?
Yes. Joni, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Joni Zimmerman with LGA Studios. And I apologize upfront. I, I've been listening to everything. I'm not the person that did the drawings. I'm the person that completed the application paperwork for our client. But I am not quite as detailed, I haven't been as involved on the detail side of the drawings as Lacy Wells has in our office. But I have been listening to everything and I can assure you that our client does wish to, you know, comply with any requirements that you ask us to do. He, he, he was not aware it was historic, so he would not have done that had he known. And, and I'm, you know, we just, we had no idea. So when he brought it to us, we didn't, we didn't know either that it was historic originally. So I've been listening to everything and I guess my questions are, I understand the request for a color board and some more detailed drawings showing specific details about the materials to be used. Also, a sample of the siding. I'm just trying to make sure that we understand everything that you're going to require so that we can be prepared to discuss it with him and make sure that our drawings are up to your standards and meet all your requirements.
One other thing that was brought up, I think we need some detail of exactly what the foundation is. If it's going to be a slab, some detail about how that's going to be done.
Okay, more detail on the slab. And.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, maybe some detail on the roofing. Because in the picture, it looks quite rusted and beat up, so I don't know what you're proposing.
So you want it to look beat up and rusted? Is that what you're saying?
Ask Ellie, she's. Looks very.
I mean, I think, I think the challenge is that we, at least in my office, we were not, we never saw it prior to it being torn down. So we want to give you what you want. Obviously, we want to make this all correct and, and up to the standards. But there are very few pictures of the building in question. And so it makes it a little bit of a challenge for us to know exactly what we need to comply with because we were not familiar with the materials that were used other than what we've been told by the client, who's clearly not a design professional. So, so we want, we're just trying to clarify exactly what we need to provide because of the fact that there aren't a lot of images that we can go back to.
So, um, uh, thank you for your information, um, the, so I would start with Ellie and the town staff is, uh, quite knowledgeable and helpful. And then, uh, the town design code, um, speaks to the design standards and the criteria and the information is there. But this is a reconstruction of a demolished, demolished historic building, and I think there's plenty of information between the nineteen ninety, uh, sketch that shows, even goes down to show the, the, uh, post and beam framing to the existing, uh, uh, photographs. The other thing I would say is there's two hundred sheds in Breckenridge, so, um, you're welcome to similar sheds.
Okay.
Yeah, like, I, I think this is a, a straightforward, almost fun design exercise to, uh, accurately reconstruct what was unfortunately lost.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it had not occurred to, to us, I think, to, to look at other designs of other sheds like that in the area, so thank you.
Sure.
I, I would add that, uh, that there is also reclaimed metal roofing available. Um, there's plenty of sites for reclaimed materials. And, and you can certainly find reclaimed for every bit of the exterior uh, reconstruction, uh, to closely match what was there and, and again, using um, examples around town, I think it would be pretty straightforward to find that material. Um, and, and we would like to see a, 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 a very strong representation of, of that material for approval.
I will add, staff is not fully sure of what the roofing material was on the shed prior to removal. Um, that is the metal of the, uh, primary house. The, uh, the photo that you're seeing in the corner is the, uh, the metal roofing in the back is for the actual primary structure and most of the angles that we have of the shed are either an angle from below or with the roof covered in snow. Um, so I can double check that, but I believe, um, staff has had a hard time determining the exact material of the roofing prior to demolition.
You did men, you did mention that staff at some point looked at satellite photographs, perhaps you can glean something from those?
Yeah, I can take another look at those as well.
Yeah, in nineteen ninety it says roof, existing corrugated metal.
This looks corrugated, I mean, this picture's pretty good on the side too.
Perfect.
Right next to that design standard one eighty-six. Ironically, the shed, the shed is in that design standard book.
So then, um, I think our design standards say when you work on an historic structure, you have to be a licensed architect. Could you check that and could you see if the LGA is in fact?
Uh, yes, staff can look into that.
What's that, this one picture has just no one on it? Okay.
Um, so, um, just to make sure staff has a good understanding, the commission does not believe the applicant is ready for a final hearing.
I think, that's, that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Joni has her hand raised.
Oh, um, it's been raised, um, she should still be able to talk if she needed to.
Okay.
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm just listening at this point.
Okay.
Um, Ellie, you'll communicate with us then on next steps?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll wait to see this again in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Um, other matters?
So the other matters is, uh, it's, it's been a, a quick, good year for you, Mark, but we have to do a, I guess we're taking nominations for, for Chair and Vice Chair. So that's kind of our main order of, of, uh, business tonight, other than these two hearings.
Nominations?
I would nominate Ethan Garrett to be our, uh, next chairman.
Somehow we knew that was coming.
You'll do well.
Who wants a second chair, does that mean?
I don't want a second, no.
I'll second the motion for you.
Oh, okay.
So I would ask who hasn't done it?
I haven't done it.
Susan.
Me, Matt and Susan, maybe Susan, she's been
Nominated Elaine for.
How about Susan?
Well, if we're going by tenure, it would be Susan would be Vice Chair.
Skip her.
Please Susan.
Okay. I will nominate Susan.
Second?
Alright. There you go. Is that what you need, Chris?
Um, yeah, and we just have to do a roll call real quick, so let's write down, uh, Mike.
Yes.
Nominated for Ethan and, uh, Mark seconded. And then Elaine. Um, nominated Susan, and who, who seconded that motion?
I think it was Ethan.
Second denomination.
I think Alan nominated.
Oh, I nominated Ethan, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And then I nominated.
Ethan. It's Susan.
Just tried to see if we're paying attention, Chris.
So who, who nominated Susan?
He.
Yeah, okay, Mike nominated Susan. And then Mark seconded Susan?
Such calamity on an election night, right? Who would expect?
We need some, uh, poll monitors here.
Yeah, okay, I got that straight on the sheet here, so, uh, for the nomination for Ethan Garrett for Chair, uh, roll call, Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proppers absent, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Alright, for the nomination of Susan for Vice Chair, uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Proppers absent and Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Alright, both pass six, six, zero.
Just goes to show, you should show up or you'll get nominated.
Yeah.
Happened to me at the Upper Blue.
Of Mark, uh, online, and he can give us a brief, uh, town council summary.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, Mark. Hey, good to see you, sorry I can't be there with you in person tonight. Um, so I'll give you a pretty, uh, congratulations to Ethan and Susan and, and Mark, thanks for the last year and all your hard work and that. Um, it's not an easy job being Chair, so, um, thanks again for your efforts there. Um, I'm just gonna give a, a, a little overview on the last, uh, town council meeting, which was a couple weeks ago. Um, and, uh, Julia did bring the employee generation, uh, ordinance to the, um, to the council for second reading, and that's the one that adopts the multiplier rates for, um, how many employees are needed per business, and that was adopted by the council on second reading. Um, and then other than that, we had our planning commission interviews and congratulations to Ethan, Elaine and, and Matt, our newest commissioner, who I, I gather you guys have all met and, uh, uh, welcome aboard, Matt, we're excited to have you. Then, uh, um, Chris and I provided the council an overview on the com- on comprehensive planning and development code update, that's something we brought to you maybe four or six weeks ago, so, um, anyway, uh, it was just a good kind of primer on, um, some of the development code issues that we deal with. And, uh, finally, employee generation on a more broad scale, Julia brought in front of the council for a discussion about if there should be some exemptions provided for smaller businesses. Um, that was a primary topic that was discussed, no conclusions were made and actually the council said they really want to kind of see a totality of the new amendments that will, um, be proposed regarding, um, employee generation, so um, small business exemptions, the fee and lieu, um, are a couple of those components and, um, Julie's hoping to bring kind of those together in a package for a discussion with the council at an upcoming meeting, so that's pretty much my overview, uh, um, of the council meeting, um, good to see you guys all tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Hey, there's nothing.
Thing, I just want to, uh, so, since I'm also in the Upper Blue and I'm technically Brex representative, and I've reached out to staff about they're redoing the comprehensive county plan and that we have an opportunity on the Upper Blue Commission to particularly comment on land use districts in the county. Um, and how they might be, whether we want to change any density in particular or type of use. So there's really not much of county, um, land in the Upper Blue that's affected by, there are a couple of pockets within Breckenridge, so if you have any comments on that, on any county, uh, unincorporated county areas within the Upper Blue District that you think might have a change, you can relay them to me or share them directly with the county. So.
Thank you, Alan.
Yep.
Anything else before we adjourn?
I think that's it.
Yeah. It is, uh, six twenty-four. Meeting is adjourned.
Did it meet your expectations?
Yes. Okay.
Good.
Well.
Did y'all get the Saving Places, uh, postcard?
Yeah.
It's in Colorado Springs.
Yeah.
Is there a way to contact, like Google?
There we go.
And reach out? Did you want to keep this? I guess I'll take it home and recycle it. Do you think that was a comment on yours or mine?
Well, until the next time. Yep.
And then lug it back to the recycle place, you know?
Put it out, fire it, shoot it, honey.